Good evening. My name is Joe Wagner and I'm the CEO of the Tampa Hills Bar Expressway Authority. Tonight, we will be presenting an update on the Salmon Extension, as well as launching a public engagement opportunity to decide on peer designs for the extension. Before we get started, I would like to go over some of the technical information concerning the virtual town hall meeting. I hope if you're viewing and listening to me, it means everyone has tested their system and downloaded the latest version of Adobe Flash. This will ensure the best participation experience for you. First, I want to make sure everyone can hear me. You should see a poll box pop up on your screen now. Please reply and let us know that you can hear us. I will give everyone a moment, say 15 seconds, to answer the poll. If you still can't hear us, and the volume is turned on for your computer, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, you can also dial in to 1-888-670-3525, then enter 7999-624648, followed by the pound sign. On the screen, you should see my PowerPoint presentation and a question and answer box. Can everyone see the presentation box and the Q&amp;A box? Our team members are here to answer your questions about the Salmon Extension and tonight's presentation. Because many of your questions may be answered by the information we are providing in our presentation, we recommend holding questions until after the presentation portion of the meeting is complete. We will leave extra time for questions and answers after the presentation has ended. If we don't get to everyone's question in the time allowed, please know that we will post all questions and answers from tonight on the www.salmonextension.com website. If your screen gets stuck or frozen at any time, please hit F5 or the refresh button on your browser. If for some reason you get disconnected and are unable to log back on, don't worry, a recording of the virtual town hall meeting will be posted to our website, salmonextension.com, within 72 hours. You will be able to view both the presentation and the question and answer session. If your question is not answered in the presentation or the ensuing Q&amp;As, you can also submit questions via the contact form on the website. Ready? Let's begin. Tonight, I'd like to offer an update on the Salmon Extension construction timeline, talk about steps Thea is taking to help mitigate construction-related impacts to Gandy Corridor businesses and residents, and then present our peer design public engagement opportunity. For those participating tonight who may have missed the previous virtual town hall meetings, you can visit www.salmonextension.com to view those presentations, as well as the related audience questions and answers at any time on demand. For those not familiar with the Salmon Extension project, the Salmon Extension is a 1.9 mile toll lane to be located in the median of Gandy Boulevard. It will offer a choice to travelers. From the bridge, you will still be able to use Gandy Boulevard for local destinations or use the Salmon Extension for a direct connection eastbound to the Salmon Expressway or Dale Mayberry Highway. From the Salmon traveling westbound, you will have a choice of the direct connection to the Gandy Bridge or to use the exits to Gandy Boulevard and Dale Mayberry that are available today. We have a brief animation of the video that I'd like to play now. This does a great job of illustrating the pathway and the choices provided by the Salmon Extension.
The Salmon Extension is a key component of Tampa Bay's transportation system. The extension will complete the Salmon Expressway's uninterrupted connection from Brandon across Tampa to the Gandy Bridge. The extension will consist of an elevated expressway in the median of Gandy Boulevard with ramps to enter and exit the extension just east of the Gandy Bridge and at the intersection of Gandy Boulevard and Dale Mayberry Highway. Traveling east from St. Petersburg, drivers can choose to stay on Gandy Boulevard for local destinations or enter the extension via the on-ramp to the left. Once on the extension, eastbound travelers have the choice to exit at Dale Mayberry or continue onto the Salmon Expressway towards downtown Tampa. The bottom of the extension structure is 30 feet high, approximately twice as high as a typical bridge design. This maintains sightlines for businesses and cross streets. When the extension is complete, the current turn lanes will remain as they are today. Peer design, decorative lighting, and public art opportunities are part of the project. Eastbound travelers along the extension have the choice to exit at Dale Mayberry or continue onto the Salmon Expressway. Travelers along Dale Mayberry will be able to enter the extension via the ramps just north of the Gandy Boulevard-Dale Mayberry intersection. Traveling west on the Salmon Expressway, drivers can choose to use Gandy Boulevard or to continue onto the extension. Trucks will be allowed on the extension. This will provide a direct route for cargo and a safer experience for drivers on Gandy. The extension will also serve as an evacuation route in case of an emergency.
Keywit is the contractor and the project design is being completed by AECOM. The project schedule is on track with site investigation, design, and permitting well underway. Construction is scheduled to start at the first of the year with an anticipated construction completion in the fall of 2020. Construction will begin on the east end near the Gandy Bridge and move east tying in to the Salmon Expressway. Please visit our website at www.salmonextension.com for up-to-date notices. Melissa McCully serves as the Salmon Extension Project Information Officer. You can reach her at 813-613-2306 or by emailing her at melissa@salmonextension.com. She is excited to support local businesses and keep the public informed about the project. She can help with any questions or concerns that business owners or citizens might have. She will be providing up-to-date information during Business Roundtable Meetings, which are scheduled to begin in early 2018. Melissa's contact information can also be found on our website at www.salmonextension.com. While road construction may pose temporary challenges, completion of the Salmon Extension will alleviate traffic congestion on Gandy Boulevard and free up capacity and access to Gandy Corridor businesses. In the interim, Thea is committed to minimizing construction impacts to Gandy Corridor businesses. This includes: Containing construction to the median of Gandy Boulevard. Keeping both lanes of Gandy Boulevard in each direction open during peak traffic hours. We will not close any driveways of businesses during construction without providing an alternative access to the businesses. This will be required only along West Shore Boulevard associated with the City of Tampa West Shore Riding Project that will be built as part of the Thea project, and along the south side of Gandy Boulevard just to the east and west of West Shore Boulevard. When the inside lanes of Gandy Boulevard must be closed, this will be mostly done so during nighttime hours. There will be minimal roadway closures requiring detours off of Gandy Boulevard. Again, this will be mostly during nighttime hours. Once construction begins, Thea will also have a Public Information Officer on-site who will hold regularly scheduled roundtable meetings with Gandy Corridor businesses. Thea is also helping to mitigate construction impacts to Gandy Corridor businesses via the Shop Gandy Business Support Campaign. Shop Gandy was created to help market and promote Gandy Corridor businesses before, during, and after construction of the Salmon Extension. This is a true community partnership between the South Tampa Chamber of Commerce, Greater Tampa Chamber of Commerce, St. Petersburg Area Chamber of Commerce, Greater Brandon Chamber of Commerce, and the Tampa Hills Bar Expressway Authority. The www.shopgandy.com website contains materials and resources designed to encourage Tampa Bay residents to shop Gandy. The www.shopgandy.com website serves as a resource for frequently asked questions. It provides a calendar of events for promotions and holiday gift ideas, a Gandy business directory, construction information, and much more. Shop Gandy partners will promote Gandy businesses on their social media networks, providing access to hundreds of potential new followers and customers. Gandy business will have access to free networking opportunities with local chambers, neighboring businesses, community stakeholders, and local consumers. If you visit a Gandy business, please be sure to share your visit on social media along with the hashtag #ShopGandy so that our Shop Gandy partners can retweet or repost your post to their friends and followers. We recently held a Shop Gandy launch party at 81 Bay Brewing Company located on Gandy Boulevard, and I had the privilege of speaking with many Gandy Boulevard business owners, residents, and community leaders. In addition to sampling food and beverages from Gandy Corridor restaurants and businesses, launch party attendees received Shop Gandy branded items such as signs, card magnets, and marketing tips, all designed to encourage Tampa Bay residents to shop Gandy. If you would like to receive any of these free materials, just send us a note via the Shop Gandy website. The Shop Gandy Business Support Campaign, as well as this and previous virtual town hall meetings, are just some of the ways Thea has worked to keep residents and businesses up-to-date and informed about the Salmon Extension project. We presented to several neighborhood, homeowner, civic and business associations in South Tampa and along the Gandy Boulevard corridor. If you would like a member of Thea's outreach team to come to your neighborhood association, civic association, or place of business, please send us a note via our website, and someone will get back to you to schedule a presentation. Tonight, we are asking you to choose which peer design you want for the Salmon Extension. Beginning tonight at 7:30 p.m. and until Friday, October 20th at 11:59 p.m., the public can vote for their preferred peer design option. And the one with the most votes is the one we are going to build. There are two options to choose from. Before I get into the details of the two options, I'd like to point out some of the similarities they share. Both are contemporary in theme and are characterized by distinctive forms and clean lines. Both are highlighted by an above-deck signature element referred to as a fin back that provides support for the bridge deck. The fin back also provides a stunning visual statement for the Salmon Extension as a gateway between each side of Tampa Bay and will uniquely belong to the Tampa Bay area as one of the region's new landmarks. The columns of each option are chamfered. This means the corners have been removed, so the columns appear more slender. The column caps use consistent dimensions for visual rhythm as you would see them from the Gandy Boulevard. They are connected by a graceful arch and tapered to reduce structural mass. For nighttime aesthetics, downlighting from the structure above will be used to light the columns. Above the roadway deck, the fin back and along the crest line of the fin and within the interior triangular openings will be lit from the median. Option 1 is the Vivid Design, representing movement and fluidity. It features flat chamfer tapers for the column edges. The architectural motif representing movement is a vertical feature protruding from the column face and flaring at the top of the column. Above the deck, the architectural feature curves across the face of the fin back with graceful fluidity. Option 2 is the Estuary Design, representing nature envisioned in the form of a river delta or a canopy of cypress trees. It features rounded chamfer tapers for the edges of the columns, an architectural motif indented and flush with the column face representing a river delta or canopy of trees at the top of the column. Above the deck, the same motif is replicated within the fin back stem. For the fin back, an indented relief feature is used to reduce the visual mass of the fin. Here's how the voting works. Now that we have shown both of these designs, we are asking for you, the public, to participate in selecting which peer design you connect with the most. Again, you can choose between Vivid or Estuary. There are two ways to vote: online or by using our toll-free hotline. Visit the Salmon Extension website, www.salmonextension.com, and follow the prompts on the homepage to cast your vote. You can also vote by calling the toll-free hotline at 1-855-980-7525. Press 1 for Vivid or press 2 for Estuary. Remember, voting begins tonight at 7:30 p.m. and runs until 11:59 on Friday, October 20th. Everyone is eligible to vote, even if you were unable to participate in tonight's virtual town hall. So please, go online or call toll-free and cast your vote. In case you forget the phone number, it will also be listed on the Salmon Extension website at www.salmonextension.com. That concludes tonight's presentation. Our Salmon Extension outreach team members will continue to answer questions until 7:30 p.m. If there are additional questions after 7:30 p.m. or anytime, please email us using the address info@salmonextension.com. As a reminder, this presentation and Q&amp;A session will be available on demand at www.salmonextension.com. Please be sure to stay in contact with us. If you have not already signed up to receive our e-newsletter, please do so by visiting the www.salmonextension.com website. You can also ask us questions or request presentations via the email address, And don't forget to vote before 11:59 on Friday, October 20th. Again, you can vote by visiting the Salmon Extension website, and following the prompts on the homepage to cast your vote, or you can vote by calling the toll-free hotline at 1-855-980-7525. Press 1 for Vivid or press 2 for Estuary. Thank you again for spending part of your evening with us tonight. We appreciate your interest in the Salmon Extension and we look forward to talking again in the months ahead. Remember, life is a journey, not a destination. Enjoy your drive.